You ready Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting of the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and Public Financing Authorities called to order. Roll call please.
Board Member Apodaca?
Here.
Board Member Shroyak?
Here.
Vice Chair Perez?
Here.
Chair Ayala?
Here.
Hey Ruth, is there any, anyone wishing to speak on any items on the agenda?
None received.
Has everybody had a chance to review the meeting map?
I'll move him.
I'll second.
Okay Ruth, can I have a roll call please?
Board Member Apodaca?
Aye.
Board Member Shroyak?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez?
Aye.
Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Item two, public hearing, presentation of the Norwalk Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District draft infrastructure finance plan. Oh, I'm sorry Ruth, you have a noticing report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair Ayala, members of the board, on September 11th, a notice was posted at the city's three designated posting sites and the city's website. In addition, notices were mailed to each resident and owner of land in the proposed EIFD and each affected taxing entity notifying them of this public hearing. And on September 12th, the notice was published in the Norwalk Patriot. As of today, no response has been received.
Staff report please.
Yes Chair, the allied members of the board, tonight we have Joseph who will present the EIFD. As you may recall, this is an ongoing process for us to form the actual district and with that, we can have Mr. Joseph present the item tonight. And he is with Cosmon Companies and they've been instrumental in having us form the district and go through this process.
Thank you Business City Manager, good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Joe Diaz again from Cosmon, good to be with you. Much of this presentation will feel very familiar to about a month ago, nothing has changed, but I will make sure I hit at least the high points for the benefit of the public. This is a funding and financing tool for infrastructure, infrastructure to support private sector investment, all of this without adding any new taxes, no new taxes, no increased taxes. This is a process that continues to be quite public, beginning with a council action in March to adopt this resolution of intention to initiate this whole process. County Board of Supervisors adopted a motion to beat the city's partner in April. Not present this evening is Andy Perez, he is the supervisor's designee, Supervisor Hans' designee, sends his support on behalf of the county, just could not make it this evening due to a scheduling conflict. This body met in July and then again in September to lay the foundation for this body and then to preview the governing document, the so-called Infrastructure Financing Plan, that has all the information on boundary, on financial participation, impacts to the general fund, projects that could be funded, and this document is what we will continue to daylight at these public hearings with one more tentatively scheduled for November. The purpose of all these meetings is just to be very public about what this tool is all about and to allow members of the public to provide comment, questions, those sorts of things. If this process continues, we will continue to do our newspaper notices, our mailing notices, our website notices, and the final hearing would be November 18th. Just a note on process for today, it's an opportunity to sort of cut things off or modify, otherwise if there's no action taken by this body, the Public Financing Authority tonight, we merely continue to the final step. So if there's no action tonight, it merely means continue to the private, final public hearing on that November 18th date. But nothing has changed over the past several months, we just continue to present the plan. Again, this is not a new tax, this is a allocation of future property tax revenue within a specific boundary. This document that's attached to the staff report just contains all of the gritty detail, this is merely a high-level presentation of the key points, what the boundary looks like, what could be paid for over time, financial impacts, and some quantitative goals and objectives. Boundary remains the same, in total approximately 200 acres, about 2.7% of the citywide acreage. Anything in a color on this map, really focusing on development opportunity sites or opportunities for redevelopment, rehabilitation. Our firm at Cosmon makes projections, so we have some idea of how many dollars there may be to spend over time. Those development projections are based on actual private sector proposals, concepts, planned future development, we merely translate that into assessed property value over time. The potential list of projects that can be funded, it's quite flexible, those listed explicitly include affordable housing as one eligible use of the funding, roadway, utility capacity enhancements, parks and open space improvements, transit connectivity, so sort of first mile, last mile connections to transit are among the list. The financial terms are the city's allocating half of its share of the future property tax just within this boundary. The county as a partner to the city is also committing 50% of its share, essentially allocating its dollars for the benefit of, for these projects within the city limits. This has been the best county so far as far as partnering with cities and they continue to do so with Norwalk. Bottom line is over a district lifetime, we think that amounts, that funding amount will be equivalent to about $70 million in present value terms. Part of the plan requires us to identify what this means in terms of community return on investment, so we quantify that in terms of housing, both affordable units and otherwise, job creation both from temporary construction activities as well as ongoing permanent jobs, the wages associated with those jobs, and then very importantly, just the dollars and cents return on investment for the city and also for the county as a partner to the city. And a lot of this is not just about this revenue stream, which is ongoing, sustainable, it's reliable, it can be bonded against in the future, but this is also about setting up the community to be more attractive for yet other money, third-party grant money as an example. For the process, here we are nearing the finish line, it's been a sort of an efficient process, meeting all the letter of the law, in terms of public meetings, all of the notices. Here we are, October 7th, this is the first of two technical public hearings. Again, tonight is an opportunity to take action to modify or reject this financing plan altogether, based on feedback that you've heard as a board up until now, whether it was from the city council meeting in September, or just members of the public, or anything you've heard along the side, this is just a chance to either change things or cut bait completely. If no action is taken this evening, then we merely continue, as stated previously, to the final public hearing of this body on November, November 18th. Separate from this body, the County Board of Supervisors has calendared their separate approval of the financing plan, tentatively scheduled for November 12th. It's just important that that take place before this body meet again on November 18th. All of this has been phased out so that we're meeting the letter of the EIFD law, staying in compliance and just going in the appropriate order, but November 18th represents that quote-unquote finish line for this process. Again, for tonight, it's merely an opportunity for this board, but also the public to hear this presentation again, an opportunity to hear additional comments or questions, and then again, if nothing has changed or rejected this evening, we merely continue. This link is just the EIFD website that remains available to the public with all of the detail for anyone interested, the technical appendices, all these notices, these agendas remain on that website. But that is it for the presentation, we'd be very happy to address any questions, thank you.
Authority members, any comments, questions?
Yes, I think I have one and a half questions.
About right.
First of all, in terms of the county doing their paperwork, everything's in line for that to happen before the 18th?
Yes, thankfully, there was, they do what they call their Economic Development Policy Committee meeting, it's a precursor to them taking an action. The full Board of Supervisors, interim Director of Community Development, Alex, and I attended, answered their questions, it was a very positive conversation, so I think they're setting up that action to go on consent on October, November 12th.
Awesome, very good, and then my, the question I've been wondering about, Joe, is, okay, so you have these parcels all over this, the city, is it the properties around the parcels that we can pull back property tax, or where, what, how do we define what property taxes we're gonna use?
Thank you for the question. We are very specifically defining these parcels in any color that total approximately 201 acres, so they're very spread apart, it's almost like a checkerboard, quite deliberate. Sites were identified, combination of economic community development staff, city management, kind of where the, the private investment was most concentrated, that's coming, so new residential, new blended use, new commercial, trying to make sure we capture, so to be very clear, it's gotta be within those parcels, those colored parcels for this district to capture it. If it's anywhere else, this district doesn't touch the revenues, they just go fully to the, to the general fund, so it's, it's very specific to these parcels.
So, thank you, so it could be that, right now, there might not be anything that's taxable on the parcel, but as it gets developed, then we can hold back some to use for enhancement?
Exactly right, there are a number of these that are actually publicly owned today, zero dollars on today's assessed property value rule, and what this district seems to capture is when they convert to private sector ownership, and obviously when new development goes vertically, goes vertical, we're going from zero assessed value to something much greater, likely hundreds of millions of dollars, and that's all value that gets captured.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, and I know the way our city manager thinks, he's probably got about 25 or 30 plan, potential plans for each one of the parcels, is that right Jesus?
That is correct, yes. We have, we have master plans for the Civic Center here, Entertainment District, we have master plans for the California Youth Authority, Chappelle is another one, the Swamp Meet, indoor swamp.
Excuse me, but I would imagine that even have like inklings as to ideas for some stuff that you haven't really even looked at, that's on this parcel.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, that's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Need a motion, right, Alex? Great, I'll move it.
If there's no motion, I believe we just continue, perhaps the attorney can opine, I think if there's no motion to do anything, I think we just move forward, but I could have that wrong.
What do you think Ruth? Need a motion?
I need it.
Receiving file.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further remarks from members?
None here.
I would just say I'm glad to see this thing is coming together so well, it's been a work in progress and it's been to a point where it's coming to fruition, and I think it's one of the things that the council will be knowing, known for in the future, having been forward-thinking about these things, and of course, thanks to Cosmon for your involvement, not only, but our other economic developments, it's a very positive thing. Staff, is there any staff remarks?
No, we're just happy that it's, you know, moving forward and being able to get this accomplished this year, and it'll be, it'll be a financing tool for the city in, in future years.
Awesome. Ruth, do you have any speaker cards?
None received.
Okay Ruth. Well, there's no one wishing to speak, we'll adjourn the meeting. We'll be moving into our successor agency meeting in a minute. And Kim Leonard, thank you, for your service. We good? Okay. The regular meeting of the successor agency is called to order. Roll call please.
Agency members Ramirez?
Here.
Rios?
Here.
Valencia? Vice Chair Perez?
Here.
Chair Ayala?
Here.
Consent calendar, there's two items for consideration, but first, is there anyone that wishes to speak?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call then.
Agency members Ramirez?
Aye.
Rios?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez?
Aye.
And Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Do, do we have anyone wishing to speak under oral communications?
Not for the successor agency.
Okay, if there's no one wishing to speak, this meeting is adjourned. The three for one tonight. I'd like to, the regular meeting of the Norwalk City Council is called to order. Well, welcome everybody here this evening, important night tonight, we're, we've actually started off Breast Cancer Awareness Month on, on the first, or ready for the first, it's an important time in the city, so let's, stay zeroed in on what we can do to participate and alleviate some of the suffering and deal with some of the education requirements that are needed out there and whatnot, but it, it's really an opportunity to reflect because, I, maybe I'm unlucky, but I can honestly say that I don't know one family that hasn't been impacted by this disease, you know, and that's pretty remarkable. So anyway, this evening, we're honored to welcome Pastor Joy Daniel of Rock the Nations here in Norwalk. Pastor Joy has been a pastor for 11 years following the invocation, we're delighted to be joined by Enrique Isok, a fifth grader at Morrison Elementary School, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Enrique enjoys playing video games, solving the Rubik's Cube, have you actually solved the Rubik's Cube? I'm impressed. I thought that only people like on the Big Bang Theory could figure that out, and drawing in his free time, his favorite thing about Norwalk is the recreation classes and going to summer camp. Pastor Joy Daniel and Enrique, please come to the front to lead us, afterwards, we will take a group photo.
Let's bow our heads and lift our hearts to the Lord, and let's pray. Almighty God, we come before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve this city. We recognize that leadership is a sacred trust, and we seek your wisdom, you steward it well. As we begin this council meeting, we especially lift up our mayor, our city officials, those entrusted with the weight of governance and the vision for the community's future. Grant them clarity, oh God, courage and compassion. May thy lead not with fear or favor, but with justice, humility and a heart to serve all people. Bless this council, oh God, bless this council with unity and purpose. Let our discussions be marked with respect, our decisions by righteousness, and our actions by love. We pray for every resident of this city this evening, from the youngest child to the eldest neighbor, may our work today reflect your heart for mercy, equality and peace. And this evening, as we begin this council meeting, we pray, guide us, oh Lord, that this meeting may be fruitful and that your presence may dwell among us. In Jesus mighty name, we pray, and everyone may say, amen, amen, God bless, thank you.
I, Enrique Isok, do, I wish for, that our support and defend. Sorry, I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
We should swear amen. He's your youngest.
Council members Ramirez?
Here.
Rios?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Here.
Mayor Ayala?
Here.
Hey, do I have a city attorney report please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the closed session report is as follows. The items one through four were announced for discussion in closed session prior to recessing into closed session. The city council recessed with all five members being present into closed session. Each of those four items were outlined and presented to the city council, however, there is no public report that needs to be provided on any of those four items. That concludes my report, it's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you, council comments, council member Ramirez?
No comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Rios?
Yes, thank you Mayor, good evening and welcome to our meeting, sorry I missed the last meeting, but I had to deal with some health issues, all is well though. I just want to share that we have a lot of activities still in the city of Norwalk, even though our summer events are over, we're jumping right into our upcoming Halloween Parade and other Halloween-related activities, thank you Park and Rec for putting everything together, and I just want to take this moment to thank all our staff for all the work that they do, and ask all of you to stay well and safe, that's all I have. Oh well, actually, I do want to, I don't want to put the deputy on the spot, but I want to thank her for wearing her pink patch and her pink handcuffs, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and many years ago, first responders got into the act of supporting those fighting against, against breast cancer, and so it is one of the ways that our first responders, our policemen and women, support the cause, and as our mayor mentioned, many of us are affected, a person, on a personal level and as well as sometimes with family and friends, so we did have our kickoff for Breast Cancer Awareness Month at our Starbucks, and I do want to thank Sergio, who is the manager at the Starbucks there on Firestone and Pioneer, he's actually hosted us for the last six years, and I also want to thank the chamber for consistently supporting the cause, to paint the town pink, fight against cancer, support those cancer warriors, and also just lead the cause for awareness and education, thank you, I know Nancy is here as well, and just to everyone, you know, just as a reminder for our ladies out there, please do not forget to make your health and wellness a priority, get those mammograms, do those self-exams, and just take this time to, to remember that health is wealth, so to all of you, health and wellness, and hope you have a wonderful month, that's all, thank you.
Thank you Margarita, council member Valencia?
Thank you, alright, I have a couple of things, a few things, Saturday, September 20th, I attended the Bajin Community, an annual Martin Greenage Celebration of Life event, and it was a great picnic, our very own Commissioner Marcel Greenage puts it together along with some other groups of the Bajin Community, and it was just a beautiful event, and I've always, it's a pleasure to honor our wonderful Martin Greenage, who was a great Norwalk Commissioner, as well as a resident and all-around wonderful person. So that was Saturday, September 20th. The 21st, the next day, was our Norwalk Lions Pancake Breakfast, thank you all to who supported, who came, who donated things, and it was a very well-attended event, we, as you know, the Norwalk Lions, we, we get the money, we put it into, right back into the community with children and seniors for eyeglasses and hearing aids, so it's a win-win situation there, and it was a really well-attended event. Tuesday, September 23rd, I had the pleasure of attending the ABC Adult School Open House Craft Fair, wonderful event, got to talk to lots of the folks there at the ABC Adult School, the one on Del Amo, because there's two, there's one on Norwalk Boulevard as well, but I attended the one over closest to Del Amo Boulevard, and bought a beautiful necklace that, I didn't get a chance because it doesn't go with the dress, but I'll wear it again, and I also, ladies and gentlemen, listen up, they have a cosmetology class as of, or cosmetology classes as of a couple of years ago, and Marta, the lady that runs it, she said that they're always looking for volunteers for facials, and, I know, right? Eyes lit up, there's some folks, for facials and makeup and hair, so please hit them up, our lady people, maybe they might be interested in going, taking a little tour, but they're very interested in getting, and it's obviously voluntary, so you get a free facial, who doesn't want that? So I'm gonna be following up and getting some of your information, that's the 23rd, and then the next day, Wednesday, the 24th, I visited the Female Community Reentry Program Facility, and they have lots of really good programs for women who we as optimist ladies support, and we saw, we, it's, it's run by, with Lakota in conjunction as well, and this is a, these are fabulous programs that give second chances, third chances to women who have had it hard in life, and they're trying to make it in life, they're trying to do things for themselves, and they told us that in their facility, they have this one program that's And they told us that in their facility, they have this one program that's one of a kind in California. There used to be several, and now it's down to only that program, where they have a woman who is incarcerated and who is pregnant. She can have her child and raise her child there. They have a great facility. It's like a home, a section of it is like a home, and they help each other up to the age, Margarita was at five or age of six? Age five, yes. It is wonderful. John Legend, the singer, was so impressed in hearing about it that he had to go visit himself. And so there's pictures of John Legend and the women there and the kids. It's fantastic. And he vowed to help out as well, to help sponsor. So that was very eye-opening, and we all took our bags of donated clothes and shoes and purses, because people need these things. And so whenever, and I'm going to put a plug in, if you have clothes that are gently used, shoes, purses for women and children, please bring them over to La Cotta. Let them know they're over on Bloomfield. And, or bring them here to the city, we will pick them up and take them over there. It's always needed. Thank you. Then Saturday and Sunday, that weekend, I was at the CTA Region Three Leadership Conference, and I got to break bread with our very own President of Tandla and the President of the Little Lake Teachers Union. And we just learned a lot about the ed code and all kinds of things. It was, it was a very, very jam-packed weekend, but learned a lot. Then on Wednesday, October 1st, I attended the Whittier Union High School District State of the Union. Very great event. Oh, and Karen was there as well, yes. We took pictures for the paper. Thank you, Karen. It was a great event, lots of really good information. Whittier Union High Schools rock. Oh my God, they are doing well. And they, some of them are number one, Karen, I don't remember what they're number one in, but one of the schools, Pioneer High School for math, is like in the top three. And I want to say Cal High had some really high numbers up there. So, you know, they're doing some really good things. And of course, Santa Fe, their music department is fantastic. And of course, a lot of our Norwalk students go over there. So it was really nice to be supportive of that. And I'll give you, I'll give you some information. I was talking to one of the trustees for the Whittier Union High School District, and she said that she was inspired by attending one of the state of the city, Norwalk, state of the city events, that she went over and talked to the superintendent of the district and said, "We need to do something like that." And they made it happen, and this was about a year, year and a half ago, and they made it happen, and it was very good, and they're going to continue, which I am all pleased about. I think Norwalk-Lamarade is going to be having theirs as well. Thursday, October 2nd, I got to visit the Senior Center, one of my favorite things to do. And the last time I went, I was working on a puzzle with some of the seniors there, and we were missing a piece or two. So I said, "I'm going to bring in some puzzles." Well, you know, it happens when you're packing up and everything. So I brought them two new puzzles, and one of them has like eight different images, like secret images. So we were really excited. I'm excited about going back and trying that out. So it was a lot of fun. And I got to have lunch with them. Fantastic lunch. Chicken marsala, beet salad, what else? Just all kinds of really good stuff, good flavor. And everybody had eaten their food. And I really didn't get any complaints. Well, one person said, "I didn't like the beet salad," but they don't like vegetables, so, you know. But everything else was fantastic. So thank you, Gabby, and please, I thanked everyone there, but I want to just reiterate how wonderful our staff are. And especially that day that I got to witness everything at the Senior Center, I just, I praises for everyone. Then I got to visit Lakeside Middle School. Fantastic school. They have a center that is for students who need extra, extra sensory, I think they call it their sensory room. Fantastic pictures, I'm going to send them. And I believe they are in, in the area, they are num, they were number one in ELD, and their number is getting higher, and scores. And I believe they're very close, and they're going to let me know so that we can get, we can feature it, and maybe we'll have some staff over there and get a certificate. I believe they're very close to finding out if they're going to have the number one spot for it. So very excited. And then the women's, that same, that same day or evening, I got to go to the Women's and Children's Crisis Shelter, WCCS First Gala. And it was a, it was also a fundraiser for their efforts, beautiful efforts, wonderful testimonies, and just very excited to be supportive of that group that we also, I believe we've referred some folks over there, and just doing some great work. And coming from a family and from a mother who always took in women who had been having trouble with their partners or husbands, you know, boyfriends, what have you, we always gave shelter to women and kids. And so even though we lived in a little tiny place, didn't have a whole lot, we shared everything. So it just, it, it just, it comes back to you ten times when you help people in need. And that's why I think what we do, what we do. We give of ourselves and we donate and we give of service. So Friday, October 3rd, I did attend a fundraiser, Jennifer was there and Margarita, for the YMCA of Commerce and Montebello. And that was a really nice event, well-attended. And I also bid on something on whether silent auctions, because if I see a silent auction, I'm bidding on something. I actually got something, so I'm very excited about collecting my prize this week. So that's what I have. Sorry, it was a lot, it was a mouthful, but I had to share. It was, it was a lot of really good things. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Anna. I'm going to give it back to Councilmember Rios, too. He's a seropnotist as well, and I know I'd gone to that LA Cotta event. Margarita?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was able to also volunteer and go. And they actually offered our seropnotist, working in conjunction with the LA Cotta and the Women's Reentry Program there, coordinated a site visit and a tour. So I had not, many of us had not actually been inside the facility, and, because you know, they all obviously want to keep everyone safe. It is in the city, city of Santa Fe Springs, right down Bloomfield here, nearby us. It's actually a large facility. You wouldn't think, looking from the outside, how roomy it is inside. But they all have, you know, their dorms, they have a kitchen, they have an outside area for the kiddos, the young kids, you know, children that they have. They also have an outdoor area where the female residents there can, can go out and just enjoy some fresh air. They also are very creative. One of the murals that they have there, which was very, very beautiful, was painted by one of the residents there. What really made an impact on me, many things did, and it was really nice being able to connect and meet with those young women who basically are given, are given a second chance. And one of the things that stood out for me is that they have the opportunity to get their education. So I met with, I got a chance to meet a few of them. One young lady in particular, who is about to earn her bachelor's degree, you know, and we know that education is important. So here is this woman who's been given a second chance and who's making every, you know, opportunity, you know, taking every opportunity with it. So I was really excited when I got a chance to meet this young woman. She wasn't too young, but I'll say young, young woman, but, because I know she mentioned she had some adult kids, and, but what impressed me was that she made a decision to get her education. And she was very, very close in wrapping up her curriculum to earn that bachelor's degree. And for me, that's a success story. And one of the things that I'll remind you all of is the city council in the city of Norwalk actually supports the efforts at LA Cotta. And so it's always, for me, it's always very rewarding to see firsthand how our funding, your funding, the county, state, federal funding gets put to good use. You know, where we actually see the results of, you know, our support and those efforts financially towards some of these organizations, LA Cotta specifically in this case, you see that, wow, we are making a difference. We are choosing those organizations that are really helping those individuals by giving at least these young women a second chance to re-enter into society as thriving adults who are giving back. Good, good civic-minded ladies. So I want to thank the Seropnotist Club for putting that together, and LA Cotta for opening up their doors to us. And as Councilmember Valencia mentioned, we did take in some gently-used clothing items, some hygiene and, you know, health beauty kits for these ladies, because they do go, they do work. They work outside of the facility, they go to school, they go for job interviews. So as Anna mentioned, if, you know, it's a good cause, if you're cleaning out your closet and would like to donate something, ladies, I know sometimes we have too much, or we need to make room to buy more. So just an idea, throwing it out there, you know. And again, thank you, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to share that.
Yeah, thanks for breaking that down, Margarita, because I know that there's a lot of people that drive down Bloomfield and see it out there. But, you know, LA Cotta has always been a mystery to a lot of people that don't really know what it is or why it's there. But once you see the different services and stuff that are involved there, it's pretty amazing. And, you know, thank you to Seropnotists for being supportive of that program. And like Margarita mentioned, the city in Norwalk has been helped to, helping to fund LA Cotta for years, years and years, like decades years. So thanks. Vice Mayor Perez?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. Margarita, you hit it right on, right on the button. That was, that was great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a few comments to add, but first, as we all, Margarita had mentioned it, and our mayor had mentioned it earlier, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm going to put a shameless plug, as a mom of boys, to our men as well. It affects men and women at the same time. So please continue to get checked for all health reasons, something that we have to think about more often than not these days. And my shout-out tonight goes to those that we have lost, for our fighters, our survivors, and our caregivers. Because without any of our caregivers, we really couldn't do anything. So thank you to all of, all of you. I do want to mention that I did attend the Serritos College 70th Anniversary Car Show. I'm not going to lie, I put in a shameless plug to have them change the name of the college, since the address is actually Norwalk. I don't know if they're going to buy it, but at least we tried, right? I also attended our Chamber Mixer with several of our new businesses that are coming into the city. It was great to meet them, talk to them, share some of the things that are happening in the city. I was also there with our city manager, so it was great to have that presence and support our chamber and our businesses at the same time. I did attend the California JPIA Educational Forum this past week. We were in classes non-stop. They started at eight o'clock in the morning, and we were not done until 5:00 PM. Lots of information that was shared that I brought home, while continue to pass on to our team. And I know several of our executive staff was there attending classes that fit directly into their line and their department. We have Halloween coming up. Can you believe we're in October? And we are going to be celebrating fall and Halloween. Our Halloween Parade is this coming Saturday. A huge thank you to the Sanchez family, 40 years of this Halloween Parade. Come out, enjoy the parade. But I would also encourage our residents to take a trip to our Cultural Arts Center and in our Mary Paxton Gallery, there is a special display of 40 years of the Norwalk Sanchez Halloween Parade. The last thing that I have, it is time for our newsletters, all kinds of informations, my friends. We get, I say this all the time, every month, we hear all the time where our residents say, "You need to communicate with us. You need to tell us what's going on. Where can we get the information?" Whether they're in newsletters, on our social media pages, or on our website, we try to over-communicate. And this really is one of my favorite Norwalk Now issues. It talks about all of the things that are coming up. It shows how the city of Norwalk is celebrating and preparing with so many of the things that can happen in our lives. We have community preparedness resources. We talk about breast cancer awareness. And we also have the Great Shakeout that is coming out on October 60th. So are you prepared, should and when, an earthquake hits the city of Norwalk? Wherever you are, you need to make sure that you're prepared. And so a huge thank you to the departments and to the public information and community team for putting out this, this newsletter. It does have tons of information on it. And the last thing that I will highlight in here, besides the state of the city with the mayor that's coming up, our Senior Center is going to be celebrating 25 years. And that is a huge thing here in the city of Norwalk. So they want to hear your story. If you had any experience at the Senior Center, your family had any experience in the Senior Center, a funny story where you shared memories, broke bread, whatever it may be, maybe you danced or something. We are always hearing that there's dancing going on at the Senior Center. Please share those stories, and the information is in our Norwalk Now, it's in the newsletter, and I'm sure they'll, they'll share how to get those stories at the Senior Center. So again, thank you, Mayor, for continuing to celebrate Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and to all of those fighters, survivors, and caregivers. Thank you.
Gabby, is there a menu for the Senior Center? Is it in the newsletter?
Mayor Ayala, we, we just inserted, so it probably fell out.
Okay. But we know. Yeah, I want to, I want to thank, well, let me back up a second, because I keep hearing about the Senior Center and its 25th anniversary and whatnot. But to set the record straight, it's 25 years old in the current building. Because the Senior Center is actually, goes back much further. The senior, actually, its senior programming started out originally in each individual park. Each individual park had a senior club. And then through the wisdom of staff, city managers and stuff in the late 70s, early 80s, they were able to get a facility on Foster and San Antonio. It used to be the old Norwalk Library for the people who've been around for a while. And, and that operated up until 25 years ago, when they moved into the new building. So just, you know, in other words, we didn't start doing this 25 years ago. We actually have been doing it much longer. But anyway, I'd like to thank Karen Spillsbury, the chamber, Jason, for the kickoff for Breast Cancer Awareness. You know, Sergio, I know, has, has hosted this at Starbucks on, on Firestone and Pioneer. So I encourage you, if you're feeling like some coffee, go to Sergio's place at Pioneer and Firestone, because he's always been very supportive of the city and very supportive of this program. I think people should know, too, is that, you know, this, this kind of thing wasn't just like a coffee clout type thing. I don't know what, how Margaret, Margaret, I don't know how Karen threatens these people or what to get them there, but just kidding. The, I mean, you have a real representation of people there. We have councilors represented, we have Blanca Pacheco, Assembly Member, we had people from the legislative offices, we had, you know, we had the superintendent, Norwalk-Lamarade, we had the superintendent of Little had the Superintendent of Lilic, we had their safety directors, we had the Sheriff's Department, knowing his people were there. I mean, it was just a remarkable group of people. And, you know, Starbucks aren't that big in the first place. I mean, there was, this was, the place was packed. And it really kind of gives you an appreciation of the level of awareness that the Cancer Society and organizations in the city, the city of Norwalk, has brought to this. Because there was a lot of people there, and there were all the people that you wanted to have there, because they're the ones that are distributing the information to everybody else. So anyway, thanks, Karen, that was a great job. And I'm sure you'll be getting us stuff on some of the future events and stuff we can put on the marquee and stuff like that. Thank you very much. This month, the city of Norwalk is proudly recognizing the month of October as Disability Awareness Month. This observance is a time to celebrate the many contributions of individuals with disabilities, increase public understanding, and promote equal opportunities for all. Through programs such as Recreation Department's Adaptive Recreation Program, individuals with disabilities are empowered to participate in sports, arts, and community activities, encourage learning, socialization, and skill development. Now, therefore, I, Tony Ayala, Mayor of the city of Norwalk, on behalf of Vice Mayor Jennifer Perez, and my fellow councilmembers, Rick Ramirez, Margarita Rios, and Anna Valencia, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Disability Awareness Month in the city of Norwalk. Let's welcome representatives of our programs and community partners to the front to accept the proclamation, join us for a group photo. Participants joining us this evening include Ari Pacheco, accompanied by Nina Montoya, Jeremy Nocón, accompanied by June and Jasmine Nocón, Joelle Casalu, accompanied by Christina Casalu, Alfredo Garcia, accompanied by Adriana Garcia, and Joanna Espinoza, accompanied by Carol Garcia. Please come forward.
(APPLAUSE).
No. Do you want us to go in the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready? One, two, and three. Perfect, one more. One, two, and three. Perfect, yeah. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Okay, the city of Norwalk proudly recognizes the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This observance provides an important opportunity to raise awareness about breast cancer, to support those currently battling the disease, and to honor the survivors and families who have been affected. City joins national and local organizations in encouraging early detection, education, access to resources to promote health and well-being. Together, we reaffirm our commitment to supporting research and community outreach that brings hope and healing. Now, therefore, I, Tony Ayala, Mayor of the city of Norwalk, on behalf of Vice Mayor Jennifer Perez, and my fellow councilmembers, Rick Ramirez, Margarita Rios, and Anna Valencia, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Norwalk. Let's welcome our community partners from American Cancer Society and strong survivor guests to the front to accept the proclamation and a group photo. Please come forward. Karen, Jason, Doro. Do you want to do your presentation now, or? We can do it either way, I mean.
Thank you so much. This city has been a proud supporter of the American Cancer Society for many years. I am purple. Today, I'll be pink. Relay for Life is my portfolio, and I have been a proud first volunteer for 20 years and a proud employee for the last 11 of those 20 years, serving our patients and the families going through cancer. The American Cancer Society is the number-one funder of cancer research, right behind the federal government, and we can't do it without the fundraising that we do with Relay for Life and making strides against breast cancer. One in three will hear the words, "You have cancer." And we're trying to shrink that number even more. But they are living longer because of the strides that we have made in medicine and health and different palliative care programs that help that person going through cancer on their journey, live longer. And I'm very proud to be a part of that. I feel with all of my volunteers that we're saving lives and we're doing it all together, and we have to do it together. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart of the support that I have always gotten from the city of Norwalk, whether it was Relay for Life or Paint the Town Purple, or Pink in the month of October, sorry, I just came out of Relay. So, and that is one thing, I do want to invite you all next September to the Relay for Life of Santa Fe Springs slash Border Norwalk. We just had it on the 27th, and I am inviting you back out next September for that. But thank you so much. We can't do what we do without you.
Thank you. We have everybody up front, whether you're a survivor, or you're a caregiver, whatever you are.
All right, our first is to go ahead and hold the camera. Ready, one, two, and three. One more, one, two, and three. Ready, one, two, and three. One more, one, two, and three. Perfect. Ready, one, two, and three. One more, one, two, and three. Perfect. Ready, one, two, and three. One, two, and three. Perfect, yeah. Thank you.
for being here and supporting our efforts. We did start this back in 2018, which was the year that I was diagnosed with breast cancer. And so this definitely means a lot, that communities such as the beautiful city of Norwalk got behind such an important cause. So I am a cancer, breast cancer warrior, as is Karen Ayala, is also a breast cancer warrior. And so I know we are always very grateful to see one another, and so I want to thank you. I also want to take this opportunity, Ellen, to put Relay for Life on our calendar for next year, please. Can we do that? That'd be great. Okay, got you, Karen. Got you, Nancy. Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gomez.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Again, we are celebrating breast cancer this month. And again, I want to thank the Chamber for taking the lead and helping the city, you know, really bring to light the efforts of supporting breast cancer awareness here in the city. I'll mention again, we have the Arturo Sanchez Parade this Saturday. It's 40 years in the making. And we do have the art exhibit at the gallery. I will welcome you to take a tour. It is extremely, extremely exciting, the history behind the family and the actual parade. I was able to visit on Friday. We also have the State of the City, not this Friday, but the following Friday. Welcome to attend. You'll see what is happening in the city and what is forthcoming for the city. We have tonight Karen Spilsbury, Executive Director from the Norwalk Chamber of Commerce, who will give us an update on the Chamber. Welcome to this podium. And I think she's going to bring her team, ambassadors, the president, and all the efforts that go behind the executive team for the Chamber.
It's a team. Might I just say that I love seeing all the pink pins that are on lapels of everybody who's here tonight? So, thank you. The last time I was here was the beginning of June, and at that time, we were getting prepped up for our 102nd Annual Awards and Installation Event, which was a wonderful time. We had the opportunity to recognize outstanding members for what they had done over the last year. So if you did not attend, our business of the year for the last year was Mr. Rosewood Family Restaurant, on this side, who is also our Chamber Board President. So let's give it up for Jason. One of our members, Irma Macias, was honored as the Volunteer of the Year. Jose Rios, to my left, with TNG Realty, one of our past Chamber Presidents, was given the President's Award. We also recognized Tony Guralva, formerly of Cerritos College, with the Board Member of the Year Award. And our Ambassador of the Year was none other than Sue Arthur. I know that's close to home for one of you. These recipients just did an outstanding job for the Chamber, and by doing that for the Chamber, they also do it for the city here. So we thank them for everything they were able to do. Our annual State of the Nation luncheon, some of you were able to attend that. We work with nine other chambers at Commerce, supporting our Congresswoman, bringing her out to our communities to share information with all of us on things that they've been working on in Washington. So we had a room filled with people, about 300. We had the nine Chamber Business Community, but we had elected leaders, and we had community leaders there, too. And we always appreciate the support that we get from our Congresswoman. So that was a fun event up in the city of industry. We had our annual Business Expo in conjunction with the City of Norwalk Summer Concerts, the last concert of the year. We always appreciate the fact that the city supports us with this event, and we thank Alan Perdomo and his crew for everything they did to help us that day. We were a little bit concerned because it was a new location. It was not going to be on the lawn, and we just did not know how that was going to work out for our vendors that attended, but it worked out amazing. There were so many people there, and because we set the vendors up between the people and the food, that was strategic. They had no choice but to walk through the vendors to get to the food. So it really was good for our vendors, and we heard nothing but great things for them. So. And another thing we did was work with our trash company, Athens Services, on an SB 1383 workshop. So for those that don't know about SB 1383, you should, because we've been talking about it for quite a few years now. But businesses are going to start being affected by this. They do not start doing their compostables in a separate bin. That's important for our business community to know this and to be aware of it. So that workshop is actually on our website as a YouTube, and our businesses can go watch it and get information about what they need to start doing. Thank you. Next slide, please. And we welcome some new members to the community. We're very excited about that. They're new in Norwalk, or they've taken over another business, so those are a few of them. Want to make sure that you come on out to a couple of our ribbon cuttings that we're having for these new businesses. The Kavani, if you notice, their Bricklight billboard by the Norwalk Self-Storage off of Behind Los Hardware, it's beautiful. It's really beautiful. And so we're going to do a ribbon cutting for them there, but then we're going to go over to our office, and rumor has it, there's a fancy donut truck that's going to be coming over there to feed people donuts and coffee. So we're very excited about those new members. We encourage you to get to know them by attending some of our events and meeting some of them. So, next slide. Our legislative activity. I know that the council knows and understands how difficult this can be sometimes, talk about. Good thing is, we have our Gateway Chambers Alliance that we partner with, and those chambers and the business members work together to advocate for good business laws. So we spend a lot of time talking to our legislators and letting them know how the business community feels about a variety of different laws. And it was about 10 minutes ago, checking on the Bill Search website, the governor still has not signed SB 79. So we're hopeful, maybe he won't, but he still has till next Monday. So wait and see on that. We are working with the New California Coalition. This is a coalition of businesses, chambers, different union groups, legislators up and down the state of California, working together for common sense laws and trying to bring some common sense back to our city so that we can move forward together. They're focusing on housing and work development, so we're working with that group. And then with Cal Chamber, we've had a couple legislative successes this last quarter, as you see. AB 580 was supported by our Gateway Chambers Alliance, and it was chartered by the governor. SB 254 was also, and again, still opposing SB 79. So we'll see what happens. And, next slide, please. It's about building relationships and working with our membership and our new businesses in town or a guest in town. It's about inviting them to Chick-fil-A for coffee and conversation. It's about going to Outback Restaurant and sitting on the patio together and being social with each other, and just getting to know each other in a comfortable way. We also do our ambassador business visits the last Friday of the month, where we go directly to our businesses, walk in the door, surprise them, give them a membership renewal or a new member packet, and they're always surprised. So that's a great way for us to get to know a little bit more about what's going on right there in their business. And our Paint the Town Pink campaign, which was mentioned many times earlier with the kickoff, also right down November 5th for the wrap-up. That's going to be coming, same place, same location, same time, November 5th. So we invite you to come and see the successes that fundraisers at a variety of restaurants in the community have done, and also our school districts raising money, and our community leaders, some of them here in the room, who are also going to be raising money. So if you have an inkling that you want to help somebody and fundraise for them, they all have their own pages on the American Cancer Society's website of Norwalk Wears Pink, and you can go directly there and make a donation, or you can donate to a canister that they might have sitting around. So some of our dates are next. Next slide. Thank you. So we have Paint the Town Pink fundraisers. Tomorrow's the first one. It's at Mr. Rosewood Family Restaurant from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Go there, tell Jason you're there supporting Paint the Town Pink, and a portion of your purchase will benefit the American Cancer Society. the American Cancer Society. Our next one is with Chick-fil-A. It's on October 22nd, all day long. Chick-fil-A, we're partnering with the city on that one, the Park and Rec Department. The next one is the 29th of October, back again to Mr. Rosewood. And our final one is Don's Teriyaki Grill, right across the street, all day long, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So I encourage you to go there and help out with what we're all doing in trying to bring awareness and fundraising to help support those people that are suffering and dealing with this, families. Then we invite you Pumpkin and Putters, October 22nd. We'll be at Golf and Stuff. We're trying a new idea. We're having a Fall Festival vendor fair on their old bumper car cement block. And then we're having our mini golf tournament. So that's open to everybody. We encourage people to bring families and to go to that event. And it's already time for small business season. November 1st through December 31st is going to be small business season here in Norwalk. We encourage you to visit those small businesses, support them throughout that holiday season. Amazon gets enough money. They do. So let's support local, and let's support our small businesses. And that brings us to the highlight of small business season, which is our Small Business Saturday kickoff at the Chamber Office, 9:00 a.m. for coffee and donuts, and then head out and shop Small and Small Business Saturday. And that's what we have coming up. Our last is a thank you, of course, as always, to the City Council, to the city staff, because a community with a strong Chamber of Commerce, a strong relationship with their city, brings goodness to the community, and it helps everybody. So we appreciate your support, always coming to our events, supporting the ideas of a Chamber of Commerce, and we're here to support you all. Thank you. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them. And let me introduce to our panel. She's newly installed President of Mujeres Extraordarias Foundation last night, which we got to go to, and she's also one of our board members. So, all right. All right. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make some comments. Thank you, Karen, for your presentation. Appreciate it. It's always a pleasure to see you guys out full in force. I know it's challenging in these economic times, especially when you have businesses closing, vacant buildings, vacant lots, et cetera, et cetera. And to the impact of COVID had in our retail industry, you know, as you said, Amazon has enough money, and it changed the way how we shop and how we look at things. But I know it's a long, long road ahead, and I appreciate your efforts. And I'm glad to see that Mr. Rosewood, your Board President, has taken the lead, is going to be the role model for SB 1383, right?
No.
I know these things, okay? So I'm glad he's going to take that role, and I hope to share that on your social media platforms, because I know in our business community it's going to be very challenging to get them all in compliance. But with Mr. Rosewood's and his 50/50 po sole, and his efforts to divert and support SB 1383, I want to thank you for all that you do. I know you do a lot of charitable work in our community, and I see you all over the place, that, from A to Z. A to Z, I don't know where you take that break and you rest, but you're there everywhere. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez. Any other questions?
I just want to say how proud and how great it is that you are all so active and so putting so many events and that help so many of us. And I wanted to ask Jason, when I rode on that Athens trash truck, did we plant the seed for this activity?
I believe so. I think that there was a strong, after seeing you up there and seeing how much we can do, we can do it together.
And we made some phone calls afterward, and we said, you know what, that's a great place to start.
And definitely, we can do it together with your help and with us participating in it. But we'd love to do it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Real quick, if I may add, Karen, I don't know if you can probably help Athens in doing their outreach to both school districts, because they have a huge diversion in supporting SB 1383 because of their lot of waste during lunchtime. Oh, we have a school board member here, right?
We do, as a matter of fact.
Mr. Rios.
Actually, I'm not sure. Athens is their holler.
I think that partnership needs to happen.
Yeah, so the school districts are allowed to have their own holler. They chose different ones. So I'm not sure who they have.
We do have a different independent, just because, but now that we're going through this, I don't think they'll be able to handle that flow of the, so I'm glad that ESO has been in touch with her, and we've had that couple meetings with them already.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Gomez, you have anything else?
Yes, so we have one more. We have the biweekly video, and we'd like to show that to the community, and you'll see the number of activities that we have just by watching this video. So with that, we will play the video.
In celebration of Mexican Independence Day on September 16th, the Social Service Center hosted its annual El Grito Celebration. The event featured live mariachi music and a strong sense of community spirit. Meanwhile, the senior center organized a Fiesta de Coloris dance for residents to join in the festivities that same morning. On September 19th, the Norwalk Public Safety Department held a public safety business meetup at Malagro Cinemas. The officers met with business owners and offered valuable information on safety and crime prevention. Later that day, Lob Hunt Packaging Systems celebrated 75 years of service in Norwalk. On behalf of the city, Mayor Tony Ayala presented the business with a proclamation for their dedicated service. The day concluded with Cerritos College celebrating its 70th anniversary, honoring years of student success and its impact on the community. Former U.S. Representative Grace Napolitano, an alumna of Cerritos College, was recognized for her leadership during the event. On September 26th, the Cultural Arts Center hosted a Colorista Cultura Painting Fiesta. Participants enjoyed an evening filled with creativity, culture, and colors. In recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Norwalk Chamber of Commerce held a Paint the Town Pink kickoff event at Starbucks on September 30th. Norwalk Council members, elected officials, and public safety officers attended the event to show their support for breast cancer awareness.
And that concludes my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Got the consent calendar up next.
I'll move it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mariela.
All right, let me dial it back for a second, though. Is there anybody in chambers that has any, have any questions or comments about the consent calendar? Okay, seen none. Adopted. Item seven, advisory bodies, council, any appointments?
I do have, I do have an appointment. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Guadalupe Gomez to the International Friendship Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Have a roll call, please, Teresa.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mariela.
Aye.
Does Ms. Gomez have to be here?
Mr. Gomez is here today.
Sorry. I thought it was Guadalupe. Sorry. I thought it was a woman. Sorry. My apologies.
Lupe. If you can, please come to the podium, and our city clerk, Teresa, will guide you in taking your oath today.
Good. Thank you. I thank everyone for this invitation.
Thank you. Would you please raise your right hand? And I'll follow, go ahead and follow along. I'll just do it in small increments. I and state your name.
Guadalupe Gomez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Yes. Can I get a picture with Mr. Gomez?
Yes. for Micro Transit On-Demand Pilot Transit Services, F Port Police.
Yes. Mayor members of the City Council, Mr. Jim Parker will present.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Gomez, Mayor Ayala, and members of the City Council. The Norwalk Transit System currently operates six routes, serving the city of Norwalk and surrounding communities of Artesia, Bellflower, Lomarada, et al. There's quite a few. And portions of the unincorporated area of LA County. We transported approximately 1.3 million passengers in fiscal year 2024-25. Routes 1, 2, and, Routes 1, 2, 4, and 7 were the highest performing and most productive services we had, carrying an average of 15 passengers per hour and an average cost of $12 per passenger hour. However, Routes 3 and 5, productivity were very low in comparison, carrying an average of only 8.9 passengers per hour and at a very high cost of $19.81 per passenger hour, that audited numbers. And that trend has been that way since COVID and pre-COVID, where Routes 3 and 5. So it's been a long-term situation. To address the low productivity challenges and high costs associated with these routes, while at the same time trying to preserve the fixed route services in our low-income and disadvantaged neighborhoods, which 3 and 5 serve, Norwalk proposes a one-year pilot program of a micro transit on-demand service along the corridors served by Routes 3 and 5. And if you look at the exhibit or diagram, it illustrates the zone boundaries that we're proposing, that mirror Route 3 and 5. It also shows Routes 2, 4, 1, 2, 4, and 7, the branching out that they go into other communities outside of those boundaries. Patrons must originate their trips and destinations to anywhere within the zone. Riders can request the following types of trips, and that would be curb, the curb service, curb-to-transfer service connecting to fixed routes, public transit service, including Norwalk, if they wanted to take trips outside the boundaries and other interjurisdictional activities for transfer purposes. We hope to work out how they can transfer, possibly even trying to migrate our tap card system into that capability for transferring to public transit services. And then curb, another very important one, curb-to-terminal services. In other words, first and last mile connections, once they, at drop-off points, to connect with major transit hubs, like our MetroLink station, so that they could have that access for their first and mile connection to those, LA Metro's, the Sea Line Station at the 605 as well. And where the traditional bus services that we operate, fixed route services, prove very challenging, so they could take trips to Farmer's Market, Arts and Sports Center, et cetera. So that's one of the advantages of the flexibility of a micro transit service. With Norwalk Micro Transit, patrons can schedule a trip using a smartphone application or by calling the program's call center. In addition, patrons can request real-time on-demand service within 10 to 15 minutes, or schedule advanced reservation service for future dates, as well as subscription service for ongoing repeat trips. At this point, you see in this diagram that right now, the actual headways for the services for Route 3 and Route 5, there are either 60 minutes between buses or 45 minutes between buses if it's Route 5. So quite a gap in terms of headway capability. So this gives also curb-to-curb ridership opportunities for vulnerable populations as well. Patrons will have access to easy-to-use, as I said before, micro branded mobile applications and website platform bookings that they could use either on the iOS and Android phones. Patrons also be able to access phone bookings, as I mentioned, if they don't have the smartphone capability, or they're not into the technology for that purpose. So we have that capability for our riders. So the NTS Micro Transit Service will deploy a maximum of 12 minivans that include wheelchair-accessible vehicles. Each vehicle will be wrapped and branded Norwalk Micro Transit and include the Norwalk Transit logo, that all patrons can easily identify the vehicles that they would be transported in. You see some statistics on savings here on this exhibit, which we hope to show that that would be a bode to our budget, which is getting tighter and tighter these days. So we want to save wherever we can, and at the same time, offer more service, supplemental service to our riders and individuals within our city boundaries. The micro transit on-demand fare policy will be the same as the fixed route service, adult-based fare, which is very low, $1.25 for the duration of the pilot, to make sure that we have the ability to attract riders to use this service. So that we are able to proceed with this micro transit service. The total value for the pilot will not exceed $2.4 million for the 12-month contract term. All necessary budgetary adjustments are addressed in the resolution that we're putting forward this evening. For the first six months, which is half that amount for this budget cycle, $1.2 million will be placed, and the rest will be placed in the next fiscal year. There is no impact to the general fund for this new service. Finally, we are asking council to approve a contract for a service agreement with Nomad Transit LLC, a wholly-owned subsidiary of VIA Transportation, Inc., to provide a turnkey pilot demonstration for the micro transit on-demand service in an amount of $2.444,0370, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and any amendments or extensions, provided there is funding in the budget, on behalf of the city, in a form approved by the city attorney. Second, we approve increasing the Transportation Department's 25-26 budget for the micro transit on-demand program in an amount of $1.220,185. Finally, we are asking council to adopt the Resolution 25-45, a resolution for the City Council of the City of Norwalk, authorizing amendments to the fiscal year 2025-26 transportation budget to support the micro transit on-demand pilot program in the amount of $1.220,185. That's my presentation for this service. I'll be happy I'll be happy to answer any questions. Also, we have with us tonight Byron, Brian Nelson, sorry, Brian, partner and principal with VIA, as well as Derek Donnell, our NTS manager of operations, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Reese, has anybody turned in a card or email or anything else to speak on this or comment on this?
No, Mayor, not for this item.
Well, to you.
And just a point of clarification, the recommended actions that Mr. Parker added, they had A, B, and C, and on your staff report it says A and B. B is a combination of B and C of what Mr. Parker highlighted.
Truly noted.
I have a few questions.
Good, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have quite a few questions, Mr. Parker. To me, it appears that this is a dial-a-ride on steroids, right? So what's the future of the dial-a-ride? Is that going to be operating in conjunction with this new program?
Our dial-a-ride program is, 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 is a, is a program that's doing very well in the eyes of fortunately the users. I was just in the post office the other day, and the van pulled up, and I asked the senior who was conducting business posts, "What do you think about that service?" He said, "Outstanding." So we don't want to do anything to make, diminish the dial-a-ride, but with micro-transit, there are so many flexibilities. We can, we can migrate and, and have this service as well as dial-a-ride service, and give the dial-a-ride users the opportunity for the, making booking their own appointments instead of just calling, and having the opportunity to have on-demand service. Right now, it's advanced reservation service. You have to call three days in advance. So anything that would happen would be a co-mingling, not a, not a getting rid of our dial-a-ride. It would be more of a co-mingling.
Okay. Okay, and the next question I have is, what measurables are you going to be using for this pilot program to determine its success or failure?
First of all, the type of measurements that we had in the, in the agenda report, the passengers per hour, the number, amount of ridership. We want to increase use of some form hybrid or on steroids, any, some form of public transit capabilities in those corridors that we don't have now. They're very low. It's not being accessed through the conventional fixed routes, so we want to add this supplement to see if that could enhance those capabilities. But we do have standards for what we are looking for in terms of the data collection. VIA could help us a lot. They have outstanding capability for data collection. They have outstanding capability for analytics, and we could present those as we go forward to see if this really is a success during the pilot period.
Yeah, I, I like the concept, and this is, I've always talked about, you know, the, you know, the history of the hustle bus, right? And getting that, those corridors or those, those routes that we can circulate our residents to this different shopping centers. Now that we're going to have major development like the WALK, the Transit Village concept, Front Street, you know, I would love to see that expand into, you know, into the hustle bus concept so that we can revitalize our businesses. We can revitalize some of these, our facilities, getting our seniors and those at the veteran housing circulated to these areas around the city, which I think this would probably serve eventually, right?
Absolutely.
So I would like to see a comparison of what it would cost to bring back that type of hustle bus service versus contracting out to another vendor. I know that's, that's, I would love to see that after the, after the measurables are determined on the success of the pilot program. That was my ultimate vision in circulating our population amongst all these different sites that we're, we're developing. I know, for, you know, you can take an example of Norwalk Square. When we had that depot and the hustle bus in Norwalk Square, that shop, that shopping center was, 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 was very busy, right? There was abundance of shop, of shops and businesses. Once that element was taken out of that center, the whole backside of the plaza died, right? There's vacancies, there's, there's nothing there. So my goal is to circulate, and we had this conversation, right, Mr. Mayor? One of the events about, you know.
Yeah, we did.
Bringing that circulation back into these vital parts of our community. So hopefully, that's, that's the end goal. You said that there was going to be no impact to our city budget. Where is the funding coming from?
It comes from, currently, it, the pilot portion will be coming from our reserves, transit reserves.
Okay, one concern I had, and then there's been discussions about the government shutdown, right? The uncertainty of federal funding specifically to your department, because you're heavily, I wouldn't say heavily dependent, but there is some dependency on, on government funding in transit dollars, correct?
Correct.
So my thing is, we don't know how long this, this, this government shutdown is going to last. If it goes beyond your record, you know, length, how, how are we going to address shortfall in funding without having to tap into your reserves?
Well, the, the latest analysis for transit, the Federal Transit Administration, the, there will be no immediate impact to those, excuse me, to those funds. And there is a, their reserves are sufficient for at least three months of, of, without any diminishing funding for all of public transit in, that they serve throughout the country. So that's a given there for at least three months, that there is no devolution or loss of funding. Secondly, our budget primarily for operating is less than 10%, if that, reliant on federal funds. Our reliance on federal funds, here's where we get hurt. We don't get to build a, a transportation public services facility. It's all in capital. We don't get to buy battery electric buses at $1 million each. That could, that could really slow us down in terms of our infrastructure and our state of good repair. But for operations, it's not as draconian.
Yeah, my concern is that I know that this was probably put on the agenda prior to the shutdown, not knowing that this was going to happen. So I'm just looking at the, the effects of the shutdown and how it's going to affect transit. You know, I don't want to get into a bind later where, you know, there's a shortfall of money somewhere to fund this program, and now you have to come back to the City Council and the city manager to find out how we can keep this program afloat for six months to a year. That's just my only concern. And these are just questions I'm throwing out because I, I wrote down some notes, and I was, I really loved the concept of circulating our population around in those unserved, underserved areas. That's just my concern is the budget aspect of it. I don't know, like I said, this was probably brought, this was obviously brought before, way before the shutdown, so we don't know what the shutdown, what the future of the shutdown is going to affect us locally. Is, is there a way to maybe, you know, maybe bring this back after the government's up and running so that we kind of, kind of know for sure where we're at? Is this, is this vital, that it needs to be pushed right away? Those are just the questions I want to throw out to you.
To answer that particular question, we're not proposing to inaugurate the service until January.
Okay.
So if something goes really bad between not, you won't have to ask me to come back, because we will cancel the contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because Councilmember Ramirez and I had that discussion. It also, you know, they involve Norwalk Square, because at the time, no transit going through there, kind of a lifeblood type thing, but it was a different system at the time. It wasn't buses, smaller buses. But the point of story is that, you know, people from throughout Norwalk would take, you know, one of those smaller buses to Norwalk Square and some other places. So that led to another conversation that had involving, when, because you're talking about micro-transit, right? So you're trying to get in need and you're coming up with a process. One of the things that he and I talked about, I've talked to Sues and Ozzy about this in bits and pieces over time, but it's probably a little premature as far as our developments go. The, I'm under the WALK, down at Front Street, you know, California Youth Authority property, and some of these other places in Norwalk that people would be traveling to, almost from a tourist perspective, from the hotels, to be able to loop in the hotels that we, yeah. And so, like I said, it might be a little premature right now, but it almost seems to me like, I don't know how, how feasible it is, but to have smaller system of transit, but then exist a larger, larger one. Because a lot of these places have, you know, you know, parking is always at premium. You know, there's certain issues. People may be having, you know, dinner with glass of wine or something, and, you know, if they're circulating around the city, we don't want them driving. But just, just give it some thought, and, and I know, as Sues, you remember, that we've talked about this, you know, some type of, for lack of, I mean, we said trolley, but, I mean, it wouldn't be a trolley, obviously, but, but that there's some subsystem to get people moving around where, where we're going to have these different developments in town. And, you know, give it some thought. Like I said, it may not even be feasible, but I think there was a point in time that Rick could, I, I could, how that served a certain kind of function. Like I said, it's not the same system, but I'm seeing that here you're being, you're adapting to what the current situation is, trying to meet the customer. Just saying, maybe at a point, might make sense. So anyway, just to, uh, Sues and him and whatever, you keep that in the back of your mind. I think not going to be tomorrow, pretty soon, we're going to have to figure that stuff out.
And I think, Mayor Ayala, this is, you, you just defined what micro-transit is, because that can adapt to be a fixed route, like you were saying, I, you're absolutely correct. We, we cannot, it's challenging to do some of the circulator things with a fixed route. Where you have, if you have your micro-transit, it's shared rides. It's not, not one person. It's a comp, it's a hybrid, like Councilmember Ramirez said, of fixed route and a TNC or transit network company like, you know, Uber or what have you. So you're going to have that flexibility, and if we're successful, truly if we're successful, and that's where the data comes in, like you said again, you will have that infrastructure in place. People will see and have it, they know the brand, and it, if it works, that's what they're going to use to get to those type of functions that you just mentioned.
Interesting, so it becomes a pilot program for something else we may be doing.
Exactly.
In the future. That's great, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, and to the team that came to present to us tonight. I'm glad to see that we're giving ourselves a potential window for education to those six to eight riders, because those are the ones that we're focusing on. On each route, we want to make sure that they're educated and really aware of how this is going to affect them directly. I really also like the, the difference here that has the ability to make a phone call.
Yeah.
Instead of relying on smartphone computer technology applications, that's something that, you know, I've always looked at when it comes to an Uber system or a Lyft system. If you don't have that technology, you cannot ride that type of station.
Right.
So thank you for having an option for that. Jim, the, the one thing that I'm really curious about, and I, I apologize if I did not see that in the report. What is the cost, and if you don't have that now, I'd love to see it compared, you know, maybe six months after the trial. What is the cost to run those two routes and the buses and the, the time and, you know, maintenance, et cetera, compared to, is there a savings? Is that, is the, the dollar amount that's here, is that in addition to what it would cost to run the route? That's kind of where my brain's going.
It's, it's supposedly we're going to, the, the savings is going to come ultimately in terms of the cost per ride, because we're going to have more riders at the same amount of funding. We're not spending any more, but it's kind of equivalent to what we are spending for a combination of three and five.
And, and that's what I had a, I had a feeling that might be the, the case. I just wanted to make sure. The other thing that I would like to mention is, I am very happy to see our branding. You know, we know that these are very specific to our city and to our riders and to our current routes, and you can't change that. When you bring in, you know, certain third parties or whatever, very, our dial-a-ride has our branding, et cetera. But if you bring in other types of rider transportation programs, they may not be branded to your specific city and continue that level of service. And I'm very excited to see that is still flowing here into this micro-transit opportunity. It's, it's very interesting, and it, like, I think the conversation has been, it may transform what we're looking at and really develop into where we're going. So I, I find it very interesting and can support the concept.
Go ahead.
There's, there's definitely some pros and cons here, but I wholeheartedly support, you know, public use, you know, public transit. I think it's good for people, good for the environment. I do like the idea that one of these services includes a direct drop-off to the MetroLink and the SeaLine. I really like that, because I think that that's what a lot of riders are looking for, and that's why Uber and Lyft are so popular. Because, you know, those people that can will rely on that type of ride share, because they got to get from point A to B, and that's it. They don't want to stop, they don't want to wait for, you know, it's like, they got to get to where they need to go. And I think that having that direct line is, is going to be very beneficial. And I also want to take it a step further and remind us that we have the Olympics coming to Los Angeles. And we need to, as a, as a community, really be at the forefront at, okay, how are we going to handle this volume? How can we take on that volume to be a win-win for the city of Norwalk? Where we can actually draw from all the interest, you know, those riders, those individuals that are being, going to be coming here to see those Olympic Games. And, and I, I know it's in the future, but you know how time flies, and we need to start thinking about it now. How are we going to, you know, handle that? Where we can meet that demand of those, you know, that, those individuals that are going to be super interested in, in the Olympics and, and coming, but also need to know how to get there. Need to have access to, okay, how am I going to get there? And, and I think if we start thinking about that, I'm hoping we, I hope, I hope all of this works out well. But I also want to, want to challenge you to, and I know, Jim, you're probably on it already, challenge you to think future, okay? You know, can we utilize our current transit system, which is doing a great job, and just give it that, that much more oomph? You know what I mean? Like, because the Olympics is coming, right? So just wanted to, you know, put that out there.
And we are working with, with LA Metro. I've been in two very broad-based meetings with, with representatives of transit systems across the country, including Canada. Everybody's getting, jumping on board for the Olympics. We're trying to find out a common communications base that we're going to incorporate with our system so they could communicate with each other, things of that sort. We also are looking at some trial-run things. We also are looking at some trial-run things with FIFA, the, you know, that's coming next year. And so, the World Cup.
Yes.
So we're going to, that's going to give us a little chance to do some trial and error on that as well.
Yeah, good, good. And go after that money. Go after those dollars.
Absolutely. I want some of that money that you mentioned tonight. No, I'm sorry. But anyway, go right ahead.
Because I know, as a member of the COG, this is something we talk about, you know, transit every time. And there's just so much going on and a lot of, you know, including the possibilities of, as you just mentioned. You know, I know you're collaborating with others. There's a big collaboration in place. But, you know, we're also, they're also looking at funding.
Exactly.
So I know, you know, that you'll do your very best to go after that available funding as well. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Margarita.
I'll make a motion to move the item.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Item nine, resolution number 25-46, amending the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget to appropriate project funds and award of contract for construction management services for the Norwalk Transit Village. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, this is an item that is exclusively related to the CYA. And this, what this means is progress. We're getting closer to the abatement, remediation, and demolition of the buildings there at the CYA. Tonight, Mr. Alex Hamilton will present the report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council. As a bit of background that I'm sure you know on this, in December 2024, the city and state entered into an agreement for the purchase and sale of the former California Youth Authority site. The escrow closed with the state on July 28th, 2025. So the city has been the owner of that property since that date. The city also entered into a disposition and development agreement with Lewis Land Developers LLC Lewis in December of 2024. The city worked with Lewis to obtain state approval of the special legislation necessary to meet and negotiate with the state for the city's purchase of the property. The city is working closely with the Lewis team to facilitate next steps for the property. And as the city manager mentioned, this is a key milestone tonight. On July 14th, 2025, the city issued a request for proposals, RFP number 26-827, for construction management services. The construction manager will assist the city during the abatement, demolition, and remediation operations of the property, which, as you know, is a large task. It's a 30-acre property with multiple hardened buildings and miscellaneous infrastructure that all will need to be addressed accordingly. Eighteen firms attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting on July 24th, 2025. On August 21st, 2025, the city received eight proposals. The following is a list of the firms that proposed, which consist of APSI Construction Management, Cummings Management Group, Griffin Structures, Mars Services, Someth, South Star Engineering and Consulting, TransTech Engineers, and Weldon Engineering. We believe that the eight responses is a really good turnout, showing really good interest on this project. The evaluation committee was comprised of the city's Community Development Department's Building and Safety Division, our building official, and Public Services Department's Engineering Division staff that reviewed and evaluated the proposals based on understanding of the project requirements, the proposed scope of work, and experience of the firm and personnel, including past performance and cost. The four highest-rated proposals were interviewed. After the interviews, the firms ranked as follows, with number one being Cummings Management Group, number two, Griffin Structures, number three, Weldon Engineering, and number four, Mars Services, Inc. But to continue on, the Cummings Management Group ranked number one based on the firm's experience on working with public clients and serving as the owner's representatives, helping manage projects from conception to occupancy. One of the highlights of their experiences, they've managed several developer-public-agency projects that include market rate and affordable housing, community benefit space, parks and open space, and commercial office space. CMG Cummings Management Group has completed similar services for the County of Los Angeles, including the Helen Keller Community Center project completed in 2015, Rancho Los Amigos South Campus remediation completed in 2023, and demolition of Stoneview Nature Center completed in 2017. They also led a team of evaluators previously to analyze the CYA property back in 2015, when the county was looking at purchasing that property for their operations. So that gives them an advantage and some pre-knowledge of the site based on their work with the county. This is an example of some of the work that Cummings Management Group has worked on that relates to their experience and speaks to their ability to provide construction management services to the city. Resolution number 2546, the one before you tonight, would authorize an amendment to the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget to appropriate 355,861 of low and moderate income housing asset funds and 533,791 non-housing bond funds to secure the advancement of property costs related to ongoing security and maintenance of the property and the cost of a construction manager to oversee the demolition, abatement, and remediation of the property. As you know, the city has been incurring costs since the state left the site sometime before we closed the escrow. Many of those costs relate to security and oversight. So the property's security and maintenance costs and construction manager costs associated with the demolition of the property advanced by the city will be reimbursed by Lewis in accordance with a mutually approved budget. The cost of the construction manager overseeing abatement and remediation shall be reimbursed to the city from state funds currently held in escrow for such purpose. So this is a net zero from a budgetary perspective for the city. The city does, at this point, staff does recommend that the City Council adopt resolution number 2546, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Norwalk authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget to add 355,861 of low and moderate income housing asset funds and 533,791 of former redevelopment agency non-housing bond proceeds for construction management services and maintenance and security services for the former California Youth Authority property located at 13,200 Bloomfield Avenue in Norwalk, California, City Project Number 7859, known as the Norwalk Transit Village. And we do request that you award a contract to Cummings Management Group in the amount of $398,690 for the construction management services and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and any amendments, including a contingency of 15%, provided there is funding in the budget on behalf of the city and a form approved by the city attorney. I'm here to answer any questions should you have them. Also, representatives from the Cummings Group are present tonight. And our development partner, Lewis, is here, Mr. Tim McGinnis as well. And I want to thank Lewis for being our partner all along in this as we move forward. And as I said and was said earlier, this is a significant milestone tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Alex. Teresa, is there any persons wishing to speak on this?
Uh, no, Mayor.
These cards I don't have.
I do not have any cards for this item.
Okay, thank you. Council, questions, comments?
Just one comment, Mayor. I just want to thank in advance to the Norwalk team that had the forefront to put in the agreement the cost of these type items. So that way, as we are developing areas in the city, it's not coming out of the city's budget. It was mutually agreed upon so that we can have that reimbursed back to the city. I'm sure Yana appreciates it as well, because this is something where it's a mutual benefit. And it's here and it was there and agreed upon from the very beginning, which is very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just like to reiterate what my colleague just mentioned, because I was about to ask the same questions and give that recommendation. So just keep us abreast of the costs and just bring it back so that we have a better understanding. Because a lot of the questions I had were answered in the report, so thank you.
Very good. Do we have a motion in a second?
Move it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Ayala.
Aye.
Okay, next section is oral communications. You have, first one is Andy, you.
Andy, can you please? It's now been four months since our community was invaded by an outside armed force that is accountable to nobody, and the response from the city continues to be underwhelming. But I'm here to show that we are not going to give up, and we will continue to demand that the city does more to protect its residents and to help our neighbors feel safe. While activity has decreased in our immediate vicinity, the stories of people being brutalized and snatched from the streets in the LA area continues daily. And now we're beginning to learn what happens in the detention centers as stories of the horrific conditions are beginning to make their way to the public. Just last Friday, yet another person died, the second in as many weeks, which now makes 17 deaths so far this year in ICE custody and a deadless year so far since at least 2018. So what are we doing to make sure that our neighbors don't join that growing list? You may think that doing nothing is the safest option in this times, but it's possible that this city may actually be putting its own residents at risk due to past actions and agreements. In 2017, Norwalk entered an agreement with the city of Downey to install automated license plate readers at the border with Downey on Firestone. It's recently become wildly widely known that the company that most often installs and operates these cameras, Flock Safety, has in fact been sharing information with federal authorities, including ICE, in violation of many local and state laws that prohibit participation in immigration enforcement. I wasn't able to find any more recent information. However, if that camera is still in operation, it's very likely that data it captured has been accessed by ICE and used to help them break up families and terrorize our communities. This agreement may have been made by a previous council, but now you are the ones with the power and the responsibility to ensure that our city is not contributing in any way to the terror of ICE and the horrors that are unfolding in their detention camps. Ensuring our city is not actively supporting ICE is the bare minimum, however. And I will continue to demand that our city does more to actively support the residents, including by creating a fund for the families impacted by immigration activity to support their needs, their basic necessities, declaring Norwalk a sanctuary city and making it known and stated formally that immigrants are safe here and they are welcome here. Advocate for and support any legal measures, including state bills or lawsuits, to protect our constitutional rights and stop federal overreach. And use the already existing city alert system to warn of immigration activity and help keep us safe with any rapid alerts, rapid response alerts. We will continue to come and we will continue to make these demands until this city shows up for our residents and helps us feel safe.
Cynthia Clemente, please.
Mayor, she'll be speaking from the top with the handheld mic, just so you know.
No, it's fine.
Good evening. I am Cynthia Clemente. Good evening, Mayor Ayala and City Council members. I am here to speak to you in regards to three of your city employees. Lieutenant Munoz, the Public Safety, he's a quadrant leader. Ozzy Ramos, who is also a city employee, and Rita Ruiz. These three have ignored me in regards to the smoking ordinance. They have lied to me. They have made promises, and they don't keep them. They have told me to call them at any time. Ozzy Ramos has told me to call Rita Ruiz or Lieutenant Munoz. Neither of them are ever available. They're always in meetings. Eight hours a day of meetings, excuse me. I call different hours. I will no longer be quiet and let them make a fool of me. If no one can give me any answers, then why do they hold these positions? Why are they allowed to treat disabled seniors the way they do? Why are they allowed to ignore us? Why does Ozzy Ramos tell me, close your windows when the drugs come in? Why does Rita Ruiz continue to lie to me? She tells me that she can't do anything because the ordinance is sitting on the city lawyer's desk. Why is this permitted? Why hasn't City Council talked to these three? And I'm not the only one. There are several seniors at Center Point Hill on every floor. I'm tired of them coming to me with complaints. Why don't I do something? I'm one person. I can't help everybody. And Ozzy just lies to me. He made me a promise. He never kept it. Rita Ruiz, she's horrible. She constantly calls Ozzy. If she doesn't know her job, why is she there? If Lieutenant Munoz doesn't care about a senior, then why are they in these positions? They don't care about any seniors. They have no compassion.
Cynthia, I know this is a... Cynthia. Cynthia. Ms. Gomez? Could you get in touch with Ms. Clemente and speak with her?
Yeah, we'll definitely follow up, Mayor.
Yeah, and then we'll talk and come up with a resolution. Next speaker is Hassan.
Good evening. I want to dedicate the next three minutes to the martyrs of Palestine. There's a genocide being conducted as we speak at the hands of Israel. The genocide has been recognized by reputable human rights organizations as well as the United Nations. I want to remind everyone that ICE and other law enforcement agencies collaborate with Israeli military. The violent tactics used on the Palestinians is now being used on our undocumented neighbors, and it doesn't stop there. They also export spyware and are contributing to the mass surveillance of undocumented folks and American citizens alike. The struggle over there is a struggle over here, is a struggle everywhere. We must realize that all these issues are connected. Since the last City Council meeting, Governor Newsom signed the No Secret Police Act into law. This is something that we have been pushing the City Council to pass with no avail. Nevertheless, I am glad that the state recognizes the public safety issues that arise from having unidentified armed and masked men roaming our streets. What I would like to know now is if the Norwalk sheriffs and the city of Norwalk are going to honor that law. I think the residents of Norwalk deserve to know what your position is on this particular issue. Finally, I wanted to speak about the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, the JRIC, that is based out of Norwalk, according to Google, and offices listed off of Imperial Highway. From what I understand, it is an intelligence operation that seeks to bridge local, state, and federal agencies to prevent, quote, terrorist attacks and major criminal threats. According to their homepage, they work under the DHS guidelines, which begs the question, what kind of data is being shared between local agencies and the federal government? With their close affiliation with DHS, are they handing over data of suspected undocumented community members? How involved is the city of Norwalk in this intelligence operation? I would like to see an audit of the data that is being collected by the JRIC to see what they are doing with this information. The Trump administration has designated people with dissenting ideologies such as anti-fascism, anti-Americanism, anti-Christian... such as anti-fascism, anti-Americanism, anti-Christianity, anti-ICE, and anti-American values, as terrorists in the National Security Presidential Memorandum VII. Please understand that the language in this memorandum is intentionally vague so that it can apply to whoever the American government sees fit. It is a valid concern that the JRIC operation can be used on citizens who express dissenting opinions. The Norwalk residents should be made aware if there is a mass surveillance operation happening in their backyard and if their data is being gathered without their consent. Thank you.
Emily Dickinson?
Good evening, City Council and members of the community, and thank you for those watching online. I'd like to mention something called "The Little King of Norwalk." "The Little King of Norwalk" is a play that is currently showing at the Los Angeles Theater Center. As a resident of Norwalk, it was quite inspiring to see our own community on stage. From seeing our community come together to protest the unnecessary deaths of our unhoused neighbors to seeing the play unfold, the lawsuit filed against the City of Norwalk. The state warned Norwalk that the ban violated state housing laws. However, the Norwalk City Council extended the ban for over 10 months. As part of the same ordinance, the city also banned new laundromats, car washes, and payday lenders, businesses that predominantly serve low-income residents. The lawsuit highlighted the city's failure to meet its housing goals, making it ineligible for state funding for housing and homelessness programs. The settlement is significant, as it's the first time the state has sued a city for a ban of this nature. The lawsuit and settlement underscore that local governments are not exempt from their responsibility to their communities, specifically to address the homelessness crisis. State officials, including Governor Gavin Newsom and Attorney General Rob Bonta, described Norwalk's actions as inexcusable and unlawful. This is one of many examples of the City of Norwalk putting their own needs before those of the community. Attorney General Bonta has issued bulletins explaining local and state law enforcement's obligations under SB 54. Now, this prevents them from assisting immigration enforcement activities like investigating, interrogating, or arresting individuals for immigration purposes. What assurance does a community have that this time Norwalk will use their power to ensure the safety and well-being of their residents? We just had, a few weeks ago, a big group of seniors come and speak to you. They have expressed their concerns over months. We have expressed our concerns over months. And yet, you claim to care about your community. You put on all these, this show, even this, Breast Cancer Awareness Month? Are you guys even doing anything? Are you contributing? Do you, like, assist? I'm not really seeing any help from the city in multiple avenues. You have the power to do something. Use it. Don't you, don't give us empty words. You even lied to the state. How are we supposed to believe you're not lying to the residents? You have your jobs because of us. We are all here not being paid. As a matter of fact, we're paying you. You are here because of us. None of you even seem to remotely show any reaction to the emotion from that vulnerable senior, the most vulnerable of a community. That is how a society is defined, how you treat those most vulnerable.
Paki. Paki. You're next, bud.
Our real true faith is close, getting closer. Let me tell you, we are really descendants of Joseph, Commander in Chief, you know, from the firstborn. Right after the trial of his faith, he proved himself to Jehovah, son of Elohim, Prince of Heaven. He proved himself is loyal to God. Jehovah make him a prince of heaven, of Egypt. Now, he married the princess, daughter of the high priest. Let's make the Polynesian the high priest of Egypt. But we are also descendant of Ishmael, who the women. And then the Ishmael women also married a Y chromosome Q. They found that with the Cherokee now. They found it out with the Cherokee. And you know, Joseph married the father-in-law, the high priest of On, marry him and the daughter. And what happened? It was a priest of On, meaning there is no divorce even when you die, because the Egyptians believed the next life continued in the underworld and the spirit world, right? They believe it. All the marriage was, all the way you die, you still marry. It was eternal marriage. And you know what, and what I found out? Let me go look up my... I didn't look it up. And what I found out? Well, you know, you know that they're called, they're called in China, they have the same idea. They have all these statues because they think it will continue in the next life. We have all kinds of people who have that. And here comes the Saudis, create this stupid idea. There is no God. There is nothing. That's stupid. And they created at the university all this bullshit that we are going through today. You know what I'm saying? That's what really happened today. And, uh, let me see. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Paki. Tamora?
My time has started. Hi, City Council. Good evening, residents of Norwalk comrades. I have to preface this. I did write something, but I have to preface this. I feel like I'm in a bit of the Twilight Zone here, and I have to ask you guys if you are aware of the things that are happening outside right now. I've sat here and I've listened to pumpkin carvings and picnics, which are all beautiful. Please don't mistake what I'm saying. The American Cancer Society, I work with them very closely. My daughter is a survivor herself. Please do not take offense to what I'm saying in regards to that. But are you guys aware of what's happening outside right now? I just want to preface with this. My name is Tamora. I've lived in Norwalk for 25 years of my life. I'm now a resident of Santa Fe Springs. But you can imagine my surprise when I found out that Norwalk, a central hub of Chicano culture, was silent in its response to ICE. I am someone that does not believe in borders. We are all children of God, and being born within the confines of an imaginary border does not make me better or lesser than someone born within a different imaginary border. Unfortunately, we have a president that disagrees. Norwalk, you have the chance to do something different here. We are fighting tooth and nail in Whittier for basic human rights, very basic human rights. You have the choice to be something different. First, the people of Norwalk demand a fund to be established for victims of ICE and their families. If you can welcome a Nazi like Elon Musk to sit his Tesla dealership on land that belongs to the people, surely you can find it within your budget to financially compensate families that have fallen victim to ICE. The gentleman to my right, I'm not sure if he's still here, mentioned a city reserve sufficient enough to fund an entire transit program. Take the money from that, because what good is public transportation if there's no one to ride it? Secondly, there is a reason why Norwalk, there's no reason why Norwalk should not be deemed a sanctuary city. You have no problem hiring undocumented labor to cut the grass at City Hall, to wash your windows at home, to clean the bathrooms at your, at the library, to set up your carnivals that you host here on the City Hall lawn, to keep your movie theaters clean, to paint sidewalks, and to build the countless corporate restaurants and businesses that continue to outsource and monopolize businesses, forcing mom-and-pop shops to close their doors. You want cheap labor, but when those same people are asking, begging for the bare minimum, suddenly it is crickets. Shame on you. Shame on all of you for forcing us to have to ask. And lastly, the residents of Norwalk demand legislation be passed prohibiting ICE from wearing masks and operating anonymously. This requires no explanation. If five masked men, please let me finish, if five masked men grabbed you off the streets and pulled you into an unmarked vehicle, how would you respond? If they pulled your wife or your kids into an unmarked vehicle, how would you respond? I see a dais of Chicano members up here, and to be honest with you, I was very taken aback because it's not like this in Whittier. Please stand with your people. Stand with the people of Norwalk. I look forward to coming to the next city council meeting, to where I look forward, and I anticipate this being on the agenda at the next City Hall meeting. Thank you.
Word to her.